Six o'clock, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening everyone, it's Monday, May 6th. Before we get into our regular meeting, we're gonna have a public hearing. Yep.
Public hearing is being held on Monday, May 6th. Police Department, Broadway, New York.
I think it was the last meeting that had the chair. Subdivisions required. We assume she's married, there's that, and your life is running. Two lot subdivisions, and forwarded. Okay, three weeks. You have some people. Yes, a public comment.
So, the parcel hiring that I remember. Varian's for the setback. So after the parcel is completed, they would be the path to the parcel ID. And we see those. No, they'll just need another variant. They get a variance. I mean, after they're creating a new parcel boundary. That's gonna suck. Presenting issues other than the area variant. So, what I think about it. Putting in the URC and the issues. This regarding this subdivision?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
All right, how many acres is two lot subdivision to cover?
Point two four acres.
All right, will they use an LD lights? Energy saving lights?
Right now, this is just for the meeting. Where?
Oh no.
Construction of garages. So, require.
And how many vehicles will these garage hold? We don't know.
I'm not aware of it right now. Do you have plans of the projects?
Says, propose twenty six garage.
All right, just so everybody knows, I, for several reasons, I'll support those two lot subdivision garages at one broad and here in Minnans. I hope you welcome my support. You're welcome.
Hearing six oh three?
Steve, is that any better? Steve, is that any better?
Hear us now.
That's a little bit better, Dom. It was, uh. I couldn't hear anything that Matt had to say. And it was in and out with, uh, when Bill was, uh, making comments.
Okay. Hopefully it's better now.
Yeah, that, that's better now.
Okay.
All right. All right, so six oh three. We're gonna go right into the regular meeting.
Yes.
So, for, for some of, uh. Some of the staff at the village, um, have had this opportunity to meet Hannah. Hannah has been, uh. A member of our village community here, supporting the police department for how long now, two years? Year and a half? Uh, doing various things for the police department. She has done some benchmarking, worked on some policies, and, uh, and she's really been a help in setting up some things within the police department to advance us and, and move us forward. So, tonight I'd like to read this proclamation. So. In recognition of outstanding dedication, exceptional performance, and unwavering commitment to excellence, we proudly present this proclamation to Hannah Slavsky. Whereas Hannah has consistently exemplified the core values of our organization through their diligence, professionalism, and passion for their work. Whereas Hannah Slavsky has demonstrated remarkable, remarkable leadership skills, inspired colleagues, and contributing significantly to the success of the team. Whereas Hannah Slavsky has exhibited unparalleled initiative offering, often going above and beyond expectations, to achieve remarkable results and drive innovation within her role. Whereas Hannah Slavsky has consistently displayed a positive attitude, fostering a culture of collaboration, respect, and positivity, positivity within our workplace. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that Hannah Slavsky is hereby recognized as an exemplary employee whose exceptional contributions have significantly enhanced our organization and enriched the lives of those around them. In witness thereof, we, the Village of Manans, do hereby extend our sincerest appreciation and gratitude for Hannah Slavsky for her outstanding service dedication and exceptional performance on this day. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Well done.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Well done.
Okay. So Hannah's last day is when?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh, I was gonna, I didn't know you were leaving, I'm sorry.
Hang on.
I'm sure they'll keep you if you decide to stay.
Okay, we, uh. Motion to approve the minutes of the, this should, uh, let's see, that's any April, what, fifteenth?
Fifteen, yes.
April fifteenth, four minutes.
The motion, second.
All those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
Excuse me, warrant twenty-two X. General, forty-one thousand, seven hundred, forty-four dollars and ninety-four cent, five cents. Warrant number twenty-three, general, ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. Water, eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. Sewer, three hundred and fifty dollars, totally one hundred and five, one hundred thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven, sixty-five. Payroll number twenty-four. Hundred and eleven thousand, thirty dollars and seventy-eight cents. Payroll number twenty-five.
Twenty-three cents.
Twenty, seventy-three cents. Wait a second. Payroll number twenty-five. One hundred and five thousand, one hundred and one dollars and ninety cents, totaling two hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-four cents.
Three cents. Three cents.
Two, three, four cents. That's what I said.
Four cents.
Whatever.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
All right, we have some transfers.
So this is one of the last. No.
No, probably.
Okay.
From the contingency account, fifteen thousand. Five thousand going to the court miscellaneous. The three thousands from last meeting, that was for the website. That, that economic development was for the website. Storm sewer repairs, seven thousand, it's for the sewer storm that was fixed on Hendrix. The courts office, computer and software. Police computer and software, five thousands. Full-time telecommunicators, four thousand. Miscellaneous equipment, fifteen hundred. Five hundred for uniform allowance. And two thousand for administrative expense. And the fire department, miscellaneous, twenty-one hundred dollars, the vehicle maintenance, twenty-one hundred dollars. The fire department EMS supply, seven hundred. To equipment repairs, a hundred. Gas and oil, six hundred. Industry, fifty dollars from equipment rental, the signs, fifty dollars. And the water fund. From the maintenance of the orinators, five hundred, to maintenance of the controls, five hundred. And those are your transfers.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
Uh, yeah. I have that, um. Phil needs a resolution to change the preliminary budget by moving twenty-five thousand from the contingency account. For the services for the Albany County Dispatch.
Basically, what happened here was. When we first wanted to do it, I used an account and then I talked to the controller's office and they said, no, you can't use that account, we gotta use this account. So I'm just changing the account.
Is this the only table that the west?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think it was first it was radio. We use the radio account.
Yeah.
But you can't use, it's now gotta be a contractual services.
Right, because the radio account was, uh, equipment.
Our motion.
Second.
All those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
Do you want, just. I need a motion for the, uh, amend the budget, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget for three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for the high service reservoir.
The water department, water fund. He has repairs.
This is to, uh, cover the repairs, correct?
Yeah. Repairs to the high service reservoir, that wasn't in the budget.
So where's it coming from?
Out of the water reserve.
Okay, um, I move to authorize the treasurer to amend the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year water fund budget by three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, to account at, uh, eight three four zero dot zero four three zero. Second.
All in favor. All right. Any opposed? Hopefully that takes care of that issue.
Um, next on the agenda is the subdivision, we're gonna table that.
Yeah, we need to wait for, for county, okay. So that'll be on next meeting's agenda. Right?
Yes, it's funny. Yeah, we should hear back from the county by the sixteenth.
Um, we have, can we, hold on, we have to table the local law too?
Yeah, and I can explain that real quick.
Why don't you explain that?
So, that also required referral to Albany County and they came back and, uh. Requested the village send a submission to the state historic preservation office, because the cemetery and a couple of structures on, on the cemetery property are on the national register of historic places. So the county said, we'd like you to go just double check with SHPO, which was the state historic preservation office. So we made that submission on Friday. We should hear back from them within a week or so. If, you know, if they come back and say, hey, we want you to, you know, provide more information, you know, then we think we can have a discussion. I will say that the county, when they make these recommendations. The village board has the ability to override any of those recommendations with a super majority vote. If we feel that, that's true. So, let's wait to see what SHPO has to say. This is just a map amendment, zoning map amendment. When the cemetery comes in and proposes to construct a new dormitorium, you know, then that may have to go through a more stringent review with SHPO. Because that's gonna disturb the ground, all we're doing is changing the map right now to allow that. So, we'll have to hear back from them before we make a decision. But just wanna let you know that that's an option that the village has. So that's gonna be taken.
Health insurance buyout.
Okay, our. We have three different buyouts for, uh, our health insurance. Uh, we have. Basically, if a, if a employee, uh, doesn't take our health insurance, we have the option for them to receive a lump sum in lieu of the coverage. Uh, and. So what I'm suggesting is that the board vote to bring them all down under one policy. Uh, currently, the Teamsters, which is DPW, the, uh, the police PDA, and the village office, which is covered by the village handbook. Handbook. Uh, all have slightly different language in the buyouts. And so what I had sent to the board was basically to summarize this a lot cleaner and fairer for everybody. So basically, what I'm suggesting is that, uh, the amounts are the same, uh, except for the, the village employee, regular village employees. For the Teamsters and the PDA, that being, uh, fifteen hundred for single coverage, twenty-five hundred for employee plus one, that's either employee plus spouse, employee plus child, and five thousand for family coverage. Uh, this just basically simplifies the language in all, all three, and the PDA has already indicated they are agreeable to this. Um, this language change. So, for instance, in the PDA contract, it says. On payroll day nearest December first each year, uh, and there's an amount equal to twenty-five percent of the amount up to the fifteen hundred, five thousand and twenty-five hundred. It always hits the fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, and five thousand, so we, we would eliminate all of that and simply, um. Convince the language to say, on the payroll day nearest December first of each year, during which the employee has opted out, the employee will receive a lump sum equal to fifteen hundred for employee coverage, twenty-five hundred for employee plus one, and five thousand for family coverage. So that is, that is my suggestion that the board, uh, adopt this language for all employees, PDA, Teamsters, and regular employees. Just to give everybody's perspective, the employee family, or the family plan is thirty-one hundred? A month?
Um. Something like that, thirty-one, yeah, thirty-one plus tunnel plus vision. Yeah, thirty-one, thirty-five, somewhere in that range.
Anyone have any questions, Dom?
And the single is like nine hundred dollars for everything. This does save us money. Substantially. Good stuff, yeah.
Questions, comments?
And we talked about it before, so.
Yeah, this just, this just simplifies it for everybody, it's exactly the same. There's no question about it, what it means.
Yeah, and then it's not, you know, us versus them kind of thing.
So, everybody's in agreement, Teamster's in agreement, PDA's in agreement, so.
So, I move to approve the increase, uh, to increase the insurance buyouts, uh, from, uh, fifteen hundred for, uh, to fifteen hundred for a single, uh, twenty-five hundred for two people, and, uh, five thousand for family.
All those in favor. All right. Any opposed? All right, so I will then get that signed as an MOU with the PDA and the Teamsters. Um, and I'll confirm with the board when I don't.
Um, the next thing up is, I didn't, it was my mistake from the last meeting, but we need, I need a motion to approve the private roads for Davis Pines. As a private road, they're gonna maintain the road, they're gonna take care of all we need. And it was, uh, I didn't think we needed it because it was private property, but I was mistaken. So.
And my understanding is.
In E nine.
Just stop sign.
Yeah.
Hey, we'll put an S stop sign at there, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, uh. This is, this came from, um, E nine one one, and they're the ones that requested it.
I move to approve the private road named Davis Pine.
Yeah.
Second.
Dwight's contract, Dwight are, um, the people that maintain are heating their dishes. And they, um, their annual service contract, they come in four times a year to replace all the filters and every one of the air conditioning units in there, and they, they maintain the units on top. And they turn, they switch it from heat to cold, they're from air conditioning to heat and vice versa. Um, their service contract is, is due, and it's forty-nine hundred and thirty dollars, it's up four hundred dollars from last year.
I'll make a motion to accept it. Uh, he made his contract from Dwight Heating.
Awesome, yeah.
Before we vote on that, um, uh, do, um, we put it out to bid recently?
It doesn't have to go up to bid, we, we went through this.
Yeah.
Because it's a professional service.
They know the systems, you know, so Don and I did talk about this.
Yeah.
To have somebody else come in. It, it may get us a cheaper price by a hundred dollars or something, you know? And then, but they don't know the system.
Right.
And then the other thing, the, like, well, Dwight, they're always here.
Good, yeah, that is, so, yeah, I mean, we, we talked about it, you know? Yeah.
We did look into Farrell, which is right down the street.
Yeah.
And some of the prices that they've had on services were rated more than right, so, you know, it was like.
Yeah, no, that absolutely makes sense, I'm just, you know, being in line with some of the other things that we've, uh, gotten quotes for, but no, I'm in favor of that, so, uh. I'm sorry, you can call for it, but we have the, uh, motion in a second.
Okay, all those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, I'll sign it tomorrow.
Okay. Um, David, you're up for the poll.
Perfect. I'm looking to, uh, we'll probably have to make a small transfer, I believe, Phil, for our recruitment intention fund. Uh, but to start the process of us having all class B uniforms, looking to purchase two thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-four cents, uh, worth of polos that have the fire department emblem, name and number, and, um, a screen press on the back that says Manans Fire. Sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents per shirt. I got a, I talked for, this is through MES, I talked with Wicked Smarts between embroidery setup, screen setup, and everything else, they were almost seventy-five dollars a shirt. Um, so. You just need approval? Yeah.
Our motion?
Second.
All those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
And then one other quick thing, I think it was already on the list, but I just wanted to confirm, I need approval to use a fire truck on Memorial Day, May twenty-seventh for the city of Warrick.
Isn't that already in the?
I think it is, but we weren't sure, just like to make sure.
All right.
Our motion.
So, yeah. All those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed?
Um, and also, just so you guys are aware, Truck Six is gonna be out of service, uh, for the next three to four weeks, hopefully we have it back before June first, uh, it's getting the repairs made for, uh.
Skyler Heights.
Down in the Scotts, acquired.
When's it going?
It'll be this morning.
Oh, good.
So.
What, I, I've not aware what, what happened.
Uh, one of our. There was a slight miscommunication with some of our membership, uh, during the operation of the, what turned out to be a tractor trailer fire at the Dawson's Body Shop. They had the ladder and bucket over the front of the cab, or over top of it, and they lowered it down and it kinda crushed the catwalk, so.
But because, because the way that New York State lawyers, did you go to a mutual aid call and you do damage to your truck on their, they, the coast company?
They all go through Skyler Heights, it's ours.
They must not be happy.
We've paid for plenty of their things. Um, so it's just, it's just kind of the fact of life in the.
So how much is it?
Fifty-two thousand, something like that.
I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head, somewhere in thirty to fifty thousand dollar range worth of bodywork and diamond plate and paint and. The biggest thing is really just the, the hours for a mechanic and bodywork. Hopefully that gets fixed up and then more issues.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Um, next up is, you want to discuss the local law, Greg?
Yeah, um. Probably by now, uh, most everybody has heard about the woman, girl student who got hit by, uh, by a illegal vehicle in Albany. So, basically. Mirroring Albany's law regarding off, what's considered all-terrain or off-road vehicles. Um, I drafted a local law to basically define those as clearly illegal. And to create a fine and a penalty not to exceed a thousand dollars. Or imprisonment not to exceed fifteen days or both, as set by the judge. Additionally, it sets a redemption fee of two thousand dollars for any vehicle that, uh, is seized. Um, we've had several recently seized, right? Um, so basically, we're just copying what Albany has done. I think Troy has something on the books similar. If not, they are going to be. Um, so. Uh, I wanted to introduce this local law and get the board's support for putting it down for an hearing, uh, to include this as a new chapter, one eighteen, which is where it would fit after consultation with Steve.
I just want it for our next board meeting.
Yeah, the twentieth.
I make a motion, uh, to set a public hearing for, uh, May twentieth for local law number three.
I'll second that.
All those in favor.
All right.
Any opposed? So we'll be seeking public comment for that.
I think this is a good move and I'm looking forward to, uh, supporting this in hearing coming.
Do we have to read it into the record?
Do we have to read it into the record? Yeah, no. All right, it'll be posted on the website. Exactly. And we got a bunch of things. Matt, you wanna talk about, um, the ADA survey?
The grant?
Yeah.
Right, so, the village submitted a grant to, uh, to CRTC to cover the costs or partial, the majority of the costs of conducting an ADA, um, survey of all publicly accessible sidewalks and, and crosswalks in the village. CRTC, uh, has been, this has been an outgoing grant for multiple years now, and essentially what it'll pay for is having somebody go out. Usually, the community has an individual and we did allocate some hours to, um, staff member, uh, supported by a consultant, and the belle is one of the consultants, whether or not we get paired up with the village, and the village gets the grant that's up to CRTP. And they just go through calls to the entire village and with a handheld device identify if there's an ADA, it's non-con compliance issue, and that's all recorded, and the next steps would be funding to make these improvements. So whether it's a new crosswalk, a new ramp, um, tactile aspects of the ramps, fixing sidewalks, et cetera. So, the village should know pretty soon if, if they're being awarded that grant. So. Which is another, and, and all of that information too would be uploaded into the GIS system, which is gonna go live, okay, tomorrow. Uh, and then we'll, we'll reach out to, uh, Lyle, Brian, Dave, uh, and Don to provide an update, some basic training on the use of that system. And then, we'll determine how, how available it is to everybody, because there's some licensing requirements for that, but it, it'll provide access to all your zoning, stormwater information, all your utilities that we've mapped over the years. Parcel data, you know, it's kind of like a one-stop shop for everything mapping in, in the village, so I think that's gonna be very helpful to everybody going forward. So, just a little added benefit there.
All right. Thanks, man.
Ending on the park grant, can you talk about that?
You wanna talk about that?
Okay, so Albany County released a request for applications for park grant, funding up to nineteen thousand dollars and, and, uh, improvements, so actual improvements that contribute, uh, uh, and benefit park users. So whether it's playground equipment, you're talking about, possible wifi, like Ganser Smith parking improvements, et cetera. So, we just started to have a conversation, so we'll, and I, I think they're due, still pretty quick, but May twenty-fourth, I think is the deadline, and it's a pretty straightforward application. There's not a, a minimum required for matching, but obviously, just for better, provide some matching, even along with in-kind, so, um, if there's, like, if you have your staff, it can provide hours. So if you have your staff, it can provide hours. So it's just a matter of trying to identify the program, exactly what you guys want to apply for. Then we'll, we'll reach out to the county and just make sure, like, like the Wi-Fi, if that's something that's eligible. So we can make that contact tomorrow. And then if there's other aspects, you know, I think it's something important to think about, whether it's this one or future, would be ADA accessible playground equipment. Including making the surface ADA accessible and then actual equipment itself that can be accessible. I think that, I think the county would probably. To start making parks accessible.
It'd be really nice if there was a sidewalk all the way to the T-ball field.
Which T-ball field is that a jam?
Both of them. It's not easy to get to if you can't walk.
Um, I shouldn't.
Real-life user experience.
Do we need, like, at the next meeting, do we have to approve anything in applying for this or not?
I didn't see the need for municipal resolution, but we'll double check all that. There's, do need to get a couple letters of support, so it wasn't specific on who, but we generally want to get it from representatives. I think it's on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so our meeting is the twenty.
Need to get a resolution, but we can do that on Monday.
So our state senators, assemblyman, maybe Tonko?
Yeah, yeah. Much less, I'm sort of a station.
Okay.
Then, you know, if you have, do you have a parks committee? Okay, so we'll just take one of the representatives, probably best, and we would grab those letters.
Okay. One, one that I was thinking of, honestly, they owe it to us to do it. I think we should get one from Supervisor Crumey. We are in the town, it's the least they can do for us. So I'll say we ask.
Yeah.
Good, so we'll get moving on that. But we'll, you guys just have to play with it.
Okay, thank you. I think all of the things that you've mentioned, the Wi-Fi of the park, everything, if it'll, it'll cover the Wi-Fi, great, but all the things you've mentioned.
I think there's an opportunity to just kind of take long-term of the parks.
Yes.
Figure out what the priority is now and then look forward to the future years and green wave and provide funding for our parks.
Well, the thought is like, we don't have a plan yet for it, but as we develop one for the playground in the South End, is this a possible source of funding for that?
I, I don't know if this is a, I don't know if it's just leftover ARP funds, it just kind of came out of nowhere for the.
I think, I think it's ARP, this is just some leftover money that we have. That's, that's much more expensive.
Yeah, oh, I know. I just didn't know if we could get from multiple sources.
It's, it's, uh.
And we're not even there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, we've, that.
Yeah, if you come up with a plan, it's good and not this year's, but next year's C F A. You know, the village might be eligible to get funding through a K F A.
Yes.
It's very competitive, but I think the demographics here align well with the requirements.
Yeah, so for the South End, I'd like to put together a committee to talk about ideas and then.
Yeah.
Some funding sources once we identify what we want.
Of course.
To look like what community.
Absolutely. And as I said, like, we're, yeah, we're not, we're not there yet for it, so it wouldn't even be cool for this. But i- in, in the future, just anytime I see funding sources, I'm like, ooh, for that.
And the further you go along in terms of what you want to do and cost estimates, that's, that's what you need.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
That's it.
Colony's having a rabies clinic.
I'm not sure that.
So if you don't have an appointment.
Okay, all right, so. All right, so that's that. Number, I've been working with the court, trying to get them to take electronic payments for fines and, and such. Once Susan looks at it, we're going to have a meeting and figure out exactly how to implement it. Right now, they're just reviewing a contract that was sent by the company who, who does this type of thing, or other courts. Eric Looper, who owns property at three nineteen Broadway, next to Chris's Mid-City Tavern, has asked to reexamine purchasing a piece of property that is on Canal Road, similar to the way that we sold Chris's Mid-City Tavern, three twenty-seven Broadway, back in, that was like twenty nineteen? Twenty twenty, somewhere around there. He's done the survey, it's one thousand three hundred sixty-five square feet. He has agreed to not build on it and to stipulate that we have a permanent easement written into the, the transfer.
Yeah, I was going to say, because that line is like, there's concerns on the property line that Chris already has existing and how that all plays together.
Yeah, so. In, in talking with Chris, basically, she has, and, and Eric, she has been illegally using his property to get to her storage area.
But even like the emergency exit of the kitchen is almost on that line, the back door.
So.
Yeah, but it's a liability for him.
It's a liability.
Yeah.
So, and she has two means to be aggressive front and back, which is what's required by code. So what, what, the conversation I had with Eric was, can you at least accommodate Chris in some way, shape, or form, even if she was to, say, put in a fence, to still have access to that? And he was willing to discuss that, he's in Hawaii, he writes kids' books, and so he was unable to be at this meeting and discuss this, but.
We don't, we're not expecting surprises tonight, right?
He would like it us to agree to the, the intent tonight, yes, but surely, there's nothing urgent here.
Yeah.
So if we have him come in and, and in person.
Well, I, I think it's only, I'll just say, I think it's only reasonable considering we sold, you know.
And that's his argument.
That we, that we sold to the other, and if somebody wants to purchase a small piece of property, you know, that, that enhances, you know, I mean. But, yeah, certainly, I, I want it to be fair in the amount that the village is compensating.
Yeah, so the rationale that we used for Chris was a dollar per square foot. So this would be thirteen hundred sixty-five dollars, we would then no longer be responsible for plowing it, maintaining it, et cetera. He would write into the transfer and easement so that the village would always have access to anything that's underneath it, which was an issue when we sold Chris her piece. Because the, the deck is on top of technically.
Waterline.
Waterline. So can we table this for the next meeting and we'll get some questions, the conversation between Chris and Hannah Joyce. The water readings came in for the Troy period and from eleven one twenty-three to four thirty twenty-four, we used a hundred and thirty-seven million seven hundred and thirty thousand gallons, which was three million one hundred and thirty thousand gallons more than the previous year. We did have a couple water breaks, good-sized water breaks this, this year. What will be interesting is when we go to bill, we'll see, make sure that we have captured a larger percentage of that. And so, uh, so this will be, you know, a talent task to see.
So we received more, this is, so this is.
Yeah, this is not much of a plus.
But we know, we haven't yet compared it to how much we build.
Correct.
Right. Household.
Correct.
Okay.
But that's, that's coming.
Right, so the difference is the loss.
Correct.
Yeah.
But we will know that soon as we're about to do the billings. All the unpaid water bills have been re-leveied. There were a hundred and thirty-six accounts that did not pay their water bill totaling ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars. We charged six thousand eight hundred dollars in re-levee fees. So those are now due on tax bills. And we worked on that today. We received our notice about CHIPS funding and we are receiving an entire three hundred and fifty dollars more than last year. So. All that extra money. And while you're excited about that, we are receiving, let's see, an extra two hundred dollars in AIM funding. And we are receiving one thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars from the temporary municipal assistance piece of the budget that was just signed. So don't spend it all in one place. The, oh, we did receive our fourth quarter sales tax check. And that creates an overage. We earned more money in sales tax by a hundred and six thousand dollars for the fiscal year, so that's a good, good sign. The Menance Business Breakfast is on June fifth, Wednesday, June fifth, at seven thirty a.m. I hope you all can join. Please. She inviting Menance Businesses to that. What does it start for, seven thirty? We submitted our report regarding ARPA funding. Bill worked on that. We are going to N I Com in two weeks. Tim?
Yes.
Going to N I Com?
It's just the three of us here?
Yeah. I met with some representatives of the League of Women Voters about some climate initiatives. And we're going to be working on a couple things I'll discuss with the board coming up. A woman from Water Relief would like to donate some trees to Ganzer Smith Park in memory of some people, so we'll be working on that. Fran Bernard. Let's see, I did communicate with the Office of Cannabis Management about revenue. Payments from the State Controller's Office are made on a quarterly basis to the county during the months of January, April, July, and October. And it still remains to be seen what the county does, then does with that money. So I have a call into their office to make sure that they give us a schedule as far as when they're going to distribute those. We submitted an application to Congressman Tonko's office to assist with the South End infrastructure project. I, I talked with his office in Washington this morning and they said our application looked favorable. So we're still working on that to help plug the gap. We have been working with E F C and we should have some communication from them about the path forward for that whole project sometime this week. Thank God. Let me see, is that it? Hang on, I think that's it. We do have two matters for executive session. What? No, I know.
Okay.
We do have two matters for executive session. So trustee reports.
Just, I just have one thing. So I want to thank the Village Department for addressing the issue with the fence on Venetia Boulevard. Although the problem still remains for me is that it was put up incorrectly to begin with. So even though the, the, the individual put the fence back up, it's still facing the wrong direction by under the code. The bad side, which I don't certainly think what is the bad side, is facing the wrong direction, which has the neighbor rather ruffled still. Is that something that can still be addressed because the entire fence around the property is put up with the good side facing the other instead of the way it's supposed to.
Wild question. I don't think, I mean, I don't think they're going to. I, I think it was, how long has that fence been up?
Well, yeah, but it's been down as long, but the problem is it should have been put up in a minute. Yeah, with some teams down.
Was that addressed ago?
Huh?
What was it addressed?
You ask it right now. Uh. Something like that, yeah.
This is the one next to Park Line?
No, no, it's next to, next to Riverdale.
I think it's one.
Eighty-three?
Twenty, twenty-three.
Well, that's wild, huh?
Yeah.
Uh, one thing, I was speaking with the owner of the lawn from Mid-City Plaza, is concerned about a electrical wire going through one of his dryer vents to somewhere up to electrical panel because he's using, well, not him, Duran is using it to power the light posts in the parking lot. So I know. That's legal?
Well, I don't.
No, yeah, it doesn't look legal to me. So.
I know Lyle was working on it.
It's facing towards, right underneath the lawn in that side, on the side of the wall, going right through the vent. I don't think that's legal. And the huge divot, I mean, he's got to fix that, somebody's going to break an ankle.
You got that bond? A lot of that.
Yeah, I know Lyle was, Lyle told, yeah, he had to get a third-party inspection. I'm not sure if he talks with that, but I'll, I'll follow through with it.
I'd like to commend the mayor and trustee Lane on a very successful Earth Day cleanup. Kate and I participated cleaning up the corner around Stewart's, and I know many others did.
He bagged a lot of trash over there.
Oh, wow. Well, it's.
It still looks okay, so.
Yeah, it's amazing how much stuff you accumulate, you're like, oh, this is never going to fill up a bag, and a bag is filled up before you know it. So there's a lot of stuff and I want to thank the people who organized it and everybody who volunteered that day. It's a great day. I look forward to next year.
Well, appreciate it. I think I have had people comment that it looks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to thank the office for, you know, what they did on the Russell's.
What did they do?
They went along with the Russell's Boulevard, you know, in their area.
Sort of fail stack.
Yeah, Phil, seven minutes, thank you, there you are.
I'm sure everybody saw that the bathrooms were completed at the park. Again, thank you to Tony LaCary and that crew, they look incredible, everyone is very happy to have them. Wednesday night at six thirty, there is a budget hearing for the school board and the library. And on Thursday from six to eight is the multicultural celebration, so the kids are working really hard with their families.
Anything else, Adam? Public comment? Go ahead, Bill.
I'm Bill Garvey. Well, I get several village items, proposed village ordinances, and public projects. Now, number one and two, they're already written, so no need for me to say. My proposed village ordinance for Menance includes following big fines, surcharge, and seventy-two days community work service for the following ordinance violation. So it's already written here, so there's no need for me to say much. And of course, I do, and I am requesting that our village public works guys will please remove that one tree from the north side of Brookside Avenue, which is blocking one yellow railway warning crossing sign, which lies between D and eight railway tracks and Broadway. And I do support installation of playground equipment at Hudson Sweep Park. And my proposed projects, well, there's no need for me to say, but I would like to have volunteers be able to do some of those projects. This way, then the village Menance can save time and money in its yearly budget. And of course, number seven, I want the village to pass enforce a bill requiring Canadian Pacific Railway to postpone dough blowing of train whistles and time restrictions, postpone all the railway tracks during nighttime. dope blowing of train whistles and time restrictions posted while the railway tracks during nighttime in here in Manance. That's one of the letters I proposed to you, Nick.
Yeah.
I hope you like the idea, and I do think it's needed. I am also observed one sign post with three signs on the signpost at West End and Upland Road, which is the signpost is leaning towards the left side of the street. I already reported this problem to the Manance Police and Clerk Don Hanahan. I also, I also observed one green bus stop shelter on West Side of Broadway next to One Metal Street Light marker number 78 has been dismantled by CDT A. I'd like to know what what the reason why CDT A removed the green bus stop shelter. Does anybody know why? It's on West Side of Broadway. Remember I told you about was cluttered with litter?
Is that the one near Mid City?
No, that's the one where the drugstore used to be. It's right next to Metal Street Light Markers, number 78.
I think they're gonna replace it. They're upgrading some of them, so it might be just, they're gonna replace it.
Now, I got one, my plan of Arctic Agriculture and Plant Research Development Center in the northern part of our village next to D and H Railway tracks. This Arctic Agriculture and Plant Research Development Project will use Arctic plants to produce new kinds of food, chemicals, energy, medicines. There is a similar one up in Alaska that has an Arctic Agriculture and Plant Research Development Center. I'm naming it for you know, Peanut Decker, who was a pea beetle dog that lived on 21 Pauling Street and remembers it. Now, I'm sure I'm gonna miss coming to the village board, you know, for the next couple of months and doing volunteer work, and I'm sorry about it. I feel badly. I will not be able to, but under the circumstances, my health and welfare comes first. But eventually, I will be here either the middle or later summer, depending on my health. I thank everyone for their thoughts, their prayers, and sympathies and concern about my health and welfare.
Get well soon, Bill.
Thanks, I intend to. Thank you for allowing me to speak. See you in a couple of months.
Be well.
Thanks, I intend to. Thanks, everyone.
Um, I did forget to mention one thing, the tree pruning on Brookside.
It's gonna be delayed till fall.
Okay.
So that we don't kill, so I don't get yelled at.
Right, absolutely. Okay, we're sorry. Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, Bill Evans, I live on Wolford Avenue. I'm a resident. I'm not talking about any of the boards I sit on in the village or any representation. If I remember correctly, the Mid City Tavern, and that was purchased, the property behind there, wasn't that under some of the COVID governors' free lands to allow things to happen so businesses could survive? If you're doing, if you're getting rid of your village-owned property at the place next door, doesn't that have to go to a public hearing or out to bid?
No.
Can you just, you know, Lyle, and get rid of the property in the village without notification or any type of uh, actually, any type of bid process? Want to be the same as as any other village-owned property?
The difference here is that the 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 board has allowed it to be under a certain set of criteria. The criteria here is that the owner of the, the new owner of the parcel is, it's contiguous. So that is a restriction that the board is allowed to put on a sale of property. So for instance, on Wolford, we are allowed to sell the property next to 30 Wolford to anyone who wishes to purchase it that is contiguous. That is allowed under the law. Otherwise, it does have to go up to it.
Okay, thank you.
Good?
Okay.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, I just was curious about any safety factors that are being put in place for the bike trail with the recent event that happened. And they they constantly say it was on the Man's part of it, so I didn't know if Man's self is doing anything in general to make the bike path safer.
Well, as a police department, we're patrolling it more than uh, with bikes and people down there. And uh, you know, patrol cars uh, usually at night are down there when it's not, you know, utilized so frequently by bikes and walkers. Uh, during the sunlight, basically, we're down at the UTV in the ice field. Before you got that, breach controls.
Do they have any leads, questions, and you know, such questions that have to do with the general work?
Uh, there's nothing about that I can comment on.
The only other thing I'll bring up is that the current uh, same people that park on the wrong side of the road making it difficult to navigate some of the smaller streets, especially Man Road, that's more nicely promoted that live on. But it's the same two or three vehicles that do it every other day, that they could just. I just, I don't know how we can fix that. It is a safety hazard.
Have they been taken at, Kevin?
Uh, they have been taken at, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure we're talking about same people, so um.
Probably are.
This is saying two or three vehicles. Every Tuesday and Thursday. They're gonna wanna switch. They don't. And I mean, and some of them, some people like to park and partially cover people's driveway. If I had an older beat-up truck, I would just plow into it for fun. But that's just me, and I don't, so I won't.
Yeah, you can always put an I theme in front of it, on the front of your car.
They get experienced. Experienced. I just think it's just sad that people don't respect people's property and access. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Um, so I'm listening, and I live on Glenwood Road. There's parks money. I would like to point out that Polk Switzer Park is very sad and neglected, and the basketball court is totally crummy would be the best way to describe it. There are also trees over there that are in the intention of coming down.
Yeah.
Case in case people want to bear.
We're putting together a whole plan for some.
Huh?
Uh, for specifically Polk Switzer, for some first level, second level, third level type things. Ultimately, what is the end goal? Uh, and what can we do just simply to move things forward? Trees are definitely a safety hazard. The quote we got was $40,000. For uh, for removing a good number of the trees. So Mike is going to remove some of the smaller ones themselves to save that expense. Uh, the bigger ones that are just not worth the safety hazard, uh, and then we're gonna go back and see what what's left. Uh, and and try to limit that expense. So uh, there should be something within the next month.
Thank you.
Wait, hold on. Let's do everybody in the room first. Sidney?
Um, I just wondered what was going on with the golf carts. I know you guys have taken them to court, but that was like months ago, so.
Uh, Steve, do you want to talk about the the update on where we are with the case on uh, 240?
Right, there was a decision handed down by Judge Basher. Hold on, I'm just trying to uh. I'm trying to put my hands on it. It gave them, I believe.
Hundred and twenty days?
Was it four, yeah, was it 90 days or 120 days?
I think it was 120 days.
In order to come into compliance uh, with the village code. The issue with the golf carts was a little bit different. Only because uh, the 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 golf carts are uh, not registered vehicles under the the vehicle and traffic law. So uh, they're considered personal property, so they can technically be stored there. Uh, we're trying to work with the owner to figure out exactly what they're gonna be doing with the property.
Be an idea to just put up a fence so we don't have to see money get off the eye right.
Yeah, no, I I understand. We, the law doesn't require them to do that, but um, they've been given a very brief reprieve here. And then I think at the end of the day, uh, you know, we'll we'll work with them on the golf carts, uh, but they've been given a brief reprieve on the quote-unquote training uh, facility they have.
They're the same owners that own the other property that has 120 days to comply with the parking lot and the building? I wasn't following.
The owners of the golf cart parcel is the same as it's the Fusion parcel.
Next one.
And they were given 120 days to comply with the property appearance?
No.
Who was given 120 days?
It's the same owner.
Okay.
But the PepsiCo parcel where the golf carts are was given 120 days because they're doing the tractor training, still out of there, and that's in a violation of the zoning code.
Okay, that's 120 days for that little.
Yes.
That's what the issue is. The issue that Judge Basher decided was whether or not they were in violation of the code with respect to the tractor trailer, parking, training, whatever it was, uh, they claimed they were doing. Uh, so that's where the 120 days comes in terms of appearance. Uh, that that was not something that was addressed by Judge Basher.
I think as a village, we need to address first impressions.
Thanks, Sidney. Anyone else?
Beth, do you have something?
Don, can you hear me now?
You can hear you now.
It's not Beth, it's Paul. I have a question. Do we have a nighttime noise ordinance?
Yes.
And what is it?
Nine, seven, or ten, it's ten, it's ten. It's either 10 or nine to seven.
So the same as the train ordinance, it's.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all I need. And we're gonna do the trees when?
In the fall.
After the leaves fall?
Yes.
Okay. Good job. Thank you.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay. Uh, we have two matters for executive session. We have a personnel matter and a contractual matter.
I move that we enter executive session to discuss one personnel matter and one contractual matter.
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
You want? Yes, uh, you can go down to where we got last time. Yeah, right there, absolutely. That's good.